Is ready to go?
Yeah.
All right, welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of Thursday, July 8th, 2021. We would like to begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Chairman Fox?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Michelle LaRose? Summer McMullin?
Here.
Sue Grissom?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
Okay, we have four.
All right, thank you very much. Item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Next up, approval of our May 13, 2021, meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Grissom. We'll give this one to Keith, second from Commissioner Voight. Any changes to those meeting minutes? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Next up, approval of our May 27, 2021, meeting minutes.
Subject?
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes to those minutes?
I don't see any.
Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Next up, item six, call of the public. Did not think so. We'll move right on to item seven A. This is site plan application number 21-010. This is a private shared driveway for the applicant, Pierre Mitchell. Anybody here for him tonight? You are. All right. Do you want to see if we got any questions after? Why don't we give it to Troy? Let's see where it goes.
Absolutely.
Troy, the meeting is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me start off with, look at the zoning map just to give a quick overview of where this property is located. Again, this is US 23 here going north and south. This is M 59 going east and west. The property we're looking at is in this area here, north of the Bullard Lake area. So it is Zone CA, but it is, it's got some SR zoning somewhat to the west as well as the east and a little bit to the south. So this is the area that we are looking at for this request. The, this is a survey of that area. The applicant is actually proposing to divide this property into four parcels. Parcel A, which would be around the corner. Parcel B, which would be just south of it. Parcel C, which is one of the parcels involved with the shared driveway. And then parcel D, which is kind of in between these, is also involved with the shared driveway. This is a little bit unique request in that although this parcel C has adequate lot width on Dunham Road, the Livingston County Road Commission will not grant them a driveway access point within this proposed parcel to Dunham Road. So the applicant is proposing a shared driveway in this location on parcel D that would then allow access for both parcel D and parcel C to get out to Dunham Road. So the shared driveway requires Planning Commission approval. There are some standards outlined in Section 5.23 of our zoning ordinance. They are proposing a shared driveway in compliance with that, and I'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Want to add anything?
Don't really need to.
No? But you can.
Troy did an excellent job. Yeah, it's simply, if anybody's familiar with this section of Bullard Road, it's a hill. The high point of the hill is the location of the existing driveway that's. Mr. Mitchell simply wants to divide, take his four land divisions, and due to the hill, there's no site distance anywhere else along Bullard Road, so we need a shared driveway to access the otherwise completely conforming parcels that we're requesting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, let's take a look at the staff review letter dated July 1, 2021. And I am going to just start on page three of the actual letter itself or packet page 21. We got some shared driveway standards, couple things that are pretty simple to take a look at. Maybe there's a discussion on one or two. Section two says we need to have at least two parcels being served by a shared driveway, which obviously we do. Bullet point number 5.2 is that the lots created are going to front on a private, public, or shared driveway, of which they would. You can see in the letter there, the review letter, the staff has provided the specific criteria, the lot area, the lot width on the Dunham Road, the lot width on the shared driveway. All are in compliance there. Any questions on any of that?
Nope.
Okay, so bullet point number three is Section 5.23 has the standards for a private road or shared driveway with a complete application being the first requirement. Looks like we do have most of an application here. There are a few items noted later in the report that I'm sure will be completed in the very near future. Item 5.23.4, construction plan requirements need to be outlined, drawings provided, and they have done so. 5.23.4.4B.4XI, the method of surface drainage, and it has been provided. The engineer is going to take a look at that, just to verify everything's cool in that department. So now I'm moving over to page four, and here we got 5.23.4.4B.4XI. And the, this is one of the incomplete pieces of information that I'm sure at some point is going to pop up. Would that be the case? That's the utilities and locations, and you don't know.
How about if I respond to this?
Okay.
Before you even discuss?
That's fine.
This is fairly easy. Normally, this section of the ordinance, of shared driveway ordinance, was put in specifically with the, what you would call the typical shared driveway scenario, where you have a parcel that does not front on a public road and needs to use either the shared driveway easement or other easements to provide public utility access. These parcels are all fully conforming, all have full frontage, all have access to all public utilities that are available. They don't need separate utility easements. It would be functionally useless. So no, we have not provided them, nor do we intend it.
There you go. Makes sense, Troy?
Yeah, it does, yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Item, well, bullet point two on this particular page, construction cost estimates. Troy, any particular reason that you look for that?
There is, after the shared driveway is approved by the Planning Commission, the next step then is for the applicant to get a land use permit. And as part of that, the township will require a construction observation account. As part of that, in establishing that, that's when we need the construction estimate. That involves HRC inspecting, HRC is our engineering consultant. That involves HRC inspecting this shared driveway to ensure it's actually constructed to the approved plans that are here tonight. So when, when we get to that stage, that's when we require a little bit more information on a construction estimate, so we can better evaluate how much time HRC would need to spend out there inspecting this.
Okay. Good?
No problem.
Great. We're on the third bullet point. This is Section 5.23.6. Lot of this might be a duplicate of something we've just covered here. Item A certainly is the, the limit of two single-family dwelling units or parcels. We've got that taken care of. The construction, we talked about. There is a letter from the township engineer there in regards to their review or their comments on this. They're, for the most part, fine, few notations. There is an email on your desk. There was an error in the letter stating seven inches of gravel, but it really is six per the ordinance. There is a T-turnaround on this particular plan, and it does comply. And item C, there is a driveway easement agreement recordable, and other than the cost estimate, I think we're good with that, Troy? Anybody have any questions on any of this?
I have one, yep. It appears that the original, the existing house has two driveways currently?
That is correct.
Okay. And it looks like you're going to utilize the one to be, to become the new shared driveway?
Yes.
Okay. There is no plan then to utilize, to continue that driveway, that existing driveway as it's shown here, as it's used now off of that road, correct? Off the shared driveway? Because that would make a third entrance off the...
Actually, it doesn't. I went through this with Troy. See, he picked up the same thing I did. It's two parcels off that driveway, so it is still only considered two.
Yes, I don't understand.
Well, there's parcel D and parcel C.
Yeah.
There are only two parcels, and the driveway is only cert, what you're looking at is that T-turnaround, thinking it's going to stub into something later on. It's not.
Okay.
Yeah, the T-turnaround is simply required by the party department.
Right, right, because of length. Okay, disregard.
Okay. So we have our easement maintenance agreements. Any questions or comments for anybody, from anybody, for anybody? If you are so inclined, there is a motion on page one at the top of the review letter.
And a motion to approve the site plan application, plan PS 010, a request to construct a private shared driveway, which is dependent on access to single-family residential lots, which will be created under a separate renovation. Approval is subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum dated July 1st, 2021. Applicant complies with the requirements of the Department of Public Works Director, Township Engineering Consultant, Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority, and any other government agencies. Three, approval of the proposed shared driveway does not include approval of any future land divisions. Four, the purpose easement made in this agreement shall comply with the requirements of the township attorney.
I second that. So motion from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Voight. Any further discussion?
I, I do have a comment. There is a slight typo on that. It says site plan application 20-010. That really should be 21-010. That's my fault. I apologize for that.
No, everybody's good with that.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Congratulations, thanks. You're out of here. Yep. Next up, item 7B, is site plan application number 21-009. This is for the Heritage Meadows Amendment to Site Plan Number 225 for Lot Coverage Standards. Hello, how are you?
Good, good, thank you. Two board members here from Heritage Meadows.
Perfect, perfect. What we'll do is we'll let Troy introduce the project, and if you would like to add anything afterwards, you're welcome to. At that point, come on up and speak into the mic so they can hear you at home, and then we'll go from there. So Troy, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. The Heritage Meadows subdivision, just for general reference as to where it's located, again, this is US 23 going north and south, M 59 going east and west. The area we're looking at is right in here, just north of M 59 and east of Clark Road. So this is the subdivision that we're looking at. You'll notice, this is a zoning map, so you'll notice it's in the white crosshatch configuration or designation. That represents it was approved as part of a plan development, and I'm going to bring up the actual plan. So this was the site plan that was approved as part of that plan development, and I'm going to zoom in on that. We're not really focusing so much on any of the layouts or any design of this subdivision. What they want to do is there's a provision that is part of this plan development in this site data portion over here that identifies the maximum lot coverage is 20%. So the lots in this particular subdivision are capped at a maximum lot coverage of 20%. And lot coverage would be things such as the footprint of the house, the driveway, any kind of impervious surface material on the property. If you recall, a number of years ago, this issue came up in a number of other subdivisions, and those that were in PDs, we amended those, and then we also made some amendments in some of the actual zoning districts and increased the lot coverage, depending on which subdivision, but generally to about 30%. So what they are proposing is to amend the site plan by essentially crossing off the 20% number, and they're proposing it to be 30%. And that is an amendment to the site plan that they're seeking, and that's really what the request is, and I'll be available to answer any questions or comments you might have.
You're welcome to add anything if you'd like. Absolutely. Just introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
My name is Danielle Longenbrooke. I'm president of Heritage Meadows Association, and my vice president, Renee Lounsbury, is also present. We filed this application because a couple of years ago, the township, I understand, approached our board of directors at the time, which we weren't on, or I wasn't at least. At that time, I don't think the board, I know for a fact the board didn't decide to file the application, but since then, we've had a lot of homeowners try to build decks and porches, and they're unfortunately over the 20%. So there's kind of been, I guess, more momentum to file the application at this time, and since it would bring us in line with the other medium-density residential property, we feel that it would be a reasonable request, even though we're not covered by those standards. When the 20% was set, that's what the medium-density residential lot coverage was at. So we did some preliminary calculations of the homes in the subdivision based on the drawings that are online on the property records, and right now, 66 out of 84 homes are over 20%. So that's kind of a huge, a huge number, and I'm not a lot coverage calculation expert. Martha and Carol would do that, but attempting from the drawings of the footprint of the house and the decks and stuff, that's kind of the rough estimate that we came up with. And if we were to increase to the 30, it would bring us more in line with only five houses being, you know, above the 30, which there's not really much we can do about it at that point. So that's all I have to add, unless you have any questions.
All right, we'll see if we do. So from the Planning Commission's standpoint, we do have a review letter from staff here dated July 1, but we also have been through this. Everybody, maybe Summer doesn't recall, we went through, we were having issues in other subdivisions in Heartland Township that had this small lot coverage allotment, and we had Heartland Estates, we had Cobblestone, trying to remember, there may have been some more. So staff went through and did an analysis of what was really going on in those neighborhoods, and then we took a peek at them and agreed. So what we did was we moved the lot coverage number up to 30% permitted, and as we can see there, what we found in the other neighborhoods is that's what naturally people are doing. When you take that size lot and you put a deck on, you have a house and you got a sidewalk, you need 30%. So they just didn't jump on the bandwagon when we went through and asked people if they wanted to do it, so...
They're slow learners.
No. Just, just had to be the right time. It's, it's not a big deal. But do we have any questions for them or comments? If you're so inclined and, and good with it, there is a motion to be found on page one at the top.
Move to approve site plan application 21-009, a request to amend the approved site plan for Heritage Meadows, PDMDR SP number 225, to amend the maximum lot coverage from 20% to 30%. Approval is subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the planning department's memorandum dated July 1st, 2021. Applicant complies with any requirements of the Department of Public Works Director in Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority and all other government agencies as applicable.
Support.
So we have a motion to approve site plan application number 21-009 from Commissioner Voight, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any further, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Congratulations. You're welcome. You're welcome. Next up is item 7C. This is site plan application 21-011. This is the Heartland Senior Living Plan Development by Pearl, and this is for the final stage of the plan development process. Troy, would you like to introduce, and, and then we'll have, we'll have any additional comments from the applicant?
Thank you. Again, just to reiterate generally where this is located, 23 M 59. This is a little further to the east of the subdivision we just looked at. This is the property here. It's on the north side of M 59. It actually is three parcels. The largest one kind of is on the east side. It kind of wraps up around, is in the CA zoning district, and then there are two parcels very similar in size that are in the light blue, which would be an office category right here. So they're looking at all three of those properties as part of this plan development. What I will do then is show, this is a schematic site plan. We're not really looking so much at the site plan here tonight, but this just generally shows the layout and what's going on. This is a plan development. It has gone through the conceptual review at both Planning Commission and the Township Board. It has gone through the preliminary review. That was a public hearing. It went before the Planning Commission and the Township Board. This is a senior living center. It's, it's a little, I'll say it doesn't exactly fit into our current zoning ordinance. It's somewhere between apartments and a nursing care, adult care facility. There can be independent people living here. There can be people who need some assistance. These are designed for people at that stage of their life where they probably are mostly independent, maybe need some assistance. And so this is the general layout of it. I won't, I'm not going to try and get into too much of the details of it, but we're now at the final PD stage. Generally, at the final PD stage, we start looking at condominium documents, master deeds, any access easements. Well, this project, it's just basically the one building. They're going to maintain it, they're going to own it. So they have proposed as part of their PD some uses that could be within this facility that, that might, they're not proposing any of those now, but they're thinking down the road in the future, if there's changes in the market, and some of those could come up. And then the other thing we've got is a connection to the property to the west. That was at the request of the township to have this applicant talk with the property owner to the west. They've had some discussions. They, they just aren't at that stage where they have that agreement in place yet. So with that, I'll just leave it open for any questions or comments you might have.
All right. Kevin, did you want to add anything to it, or if you'd like to, come on forward, introduce yourself. I think most of us know you, but not everybody.
Yeah, I've been here a few times.
A few.
So I failed to bring a presentation or send it to you early. I have it on flash drive right now, Troy. I mean, would it be okay to bring that up or not?
Yeah, if you want. I, I'll try. I'm not the most computer tech savvy, but...
Clicker, or is it...
It's, it's right here, but I think there's another one. So I think you have to turn it on. There. If I can, let me go ahead.
And I have a copy of the presentation, so I'll hand that out to everybody right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just looking, how do I get it to just...
Right here, Troy?
This? Right here? Nope. This thing?
Yes.
Oh, well, there you go. They got a label.
All right, you two swap seats.
Good work, Troy.
You can sit at the table.
This is not the first time she's come to your rescue.
You can sit at the table.
I'm fine here. I'm not, I, I know there's a few pages. I'm going to go through things fairly quickly. You've seen this before, so...
Yep.
But, but thank you, Chairman Fox, for allowing me to speak tonight in front of the Planning Commission.
Is it working?
It's great, the page you created.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll get used to this. It's a little different. So you may remember my team from before. I'm, my name is Kevin Brown. I'm a vice president of development with Pearl Developers based in Cleveland, Ohio, and I've talked about our, our team and who we're bringing to the table to help put this development together. Now Pearl, we are the lead developer, and we're partnering on a very similar development with Lockwood Companies on a 130-unit senior facility in South Lyon. It's actually under construction and will be opening up in December of this year, so very good comparable for you coming up here. Lockwood is our management company and a full partner in the deal, so they are an owner as well as Pearl. Now, they're based in Southfield. They have a number of similar developments. The closest to Heartland is, is in Fenton, and another one in Waterford. So they're a pretty known commodity in southeast Michigan. They're a third-generation company, so been around quite a while managing, developing, and owning not only senior but other types of housing. Our architect, RDL Architects, is based in Shaker Heights, Ohio. My company has a long history of working with RDL on other developments. They are specialists in senior housing, not just independent living, but kind of the full spectrum of senior housing, being skilled nursing, assisted living, memory care. So they, they bring a lot to the table in the design of a building like this. And we are working with the Manic Smith Group on the civil engineering, which is very important during the stage, and we're working with their office in Detroit. So the proposal, you know, it's kind of called different things. I, I know your, your zoning code doesn't have a really, a direct label for it, but we like to call it senior independent living. You can call it congregate care, but it's really looking, it's really being offered to seniors that are looking to downsize, looking for a lifestyle change, looking for supports next to them, let's say. So the, what we're offering is a 146-unit residential facility with different amenities that I'll get to in a few minutes. And there is significant demand. We've completed a market study that's shown low capture rate, low penetration rates, so really showing good demand for this product type in the area. So we are offering a high level of services, and it's really the services that make this type of development successful. So I'll just, you can read the, the base level of services, but I think what's probably worth noting here is a couple of items. It's going to be a large staff contingent here. I mean, there'd be someone there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, we'll have a number of people in operations, property... Now, we'll have a number of people in operations, property management, a leasing agent, we'll have a full-time activities director, full-time concierge. So we will have a large staff contingent in addition to the services. And I'll get in more into the services component here in a second, but we'll have twelve people that'll be as part of the services package. And we do have a couple of third-party spaces. We have a beauty salon, and we do have a third-party home-based healthcare provider that also employs people here, or would employ people here, excuse me. Yeah, so as I mentioned, the third-party home-based healthcare provider would provide services to tenants as needed. They would not be affiliated with Pearl or Lockwood. They would be truly third-party. So the residents could work with that third-party provider on a private pay or through insurance if they need help with certain activities of daily living. Now, this is not assisted living, so it's not that level of care. There's not, you know, nurse stations, but there will be a, a small clinic on site that will be staffed twenty-four hours a day. Now, as far as the other services that are available to tenants outside of the base services and the shuttle bus, we will be offering meal services, so two meals a day, either a plated lunch or a plated breakfast, and a dinner. There'll also be housekeeping and laundry services available. So we feel this is what the market demands or is looking for, but these types of services that we're offering allow seniors to live independently longer in the community that they have grown up in or lived in for quite a long time. Yeah, the proposed development, I mean, is again a hundred-and-forty-six apartments, a mixture of one and two-bedroom apartments. We will be offering sixty-four of the apartments at a, at a below-market rate, and the tenants would have to qualify on an income-based test for those units, not an asset-based test. So what this allows is seniors who have retired, have some savings in the bank, to allow those savings to last them longer into life. You know, it's a way of preserving your assets longer and accessing services that you may want à la carte. The marquary units will be offered really kind of, sort of at the prices in the marketplace or similar prices. And if we are successful moving this forward here through Township Board and getting the water line extended and whatnot, we would be looking at starting construction in spring of twenty-two and would be looking at occupancy in early 2024. So big project, about a twenty-month construction period. I'm sure this is, you know this very well, as Troy described, we, we are on the north side of Highland Road, just east of, excuse me, west of Fenton Road, right up against the, the Heartland Heritage Field. And it does put us in a pretty good position to access services in Heartland, you know, grocery, pharmacy, banks, restaurants. And as I mentioned earlier, we will have a shuttle, a shuttle bus available for our residents to utilize accessing those services. I know Troy showed this to you, so I won't spend a tremendous amount of time on this. I would note that north is to the right. Before you saw the context map, north was to the, to the top here. It's pointed to the right. So the site, this is the conceptual site planner's more detailed drawings that we've submitted to the township that responded to some comments that we received at earlier meetings, including some landscape comments and certainly locations of trees and whatnot that we, we addressed. But the, the building is located to provide really generous setbacks from all sides. We have on the sort of, would be the southern portion or the area, the area, the building closest to, to Highland Road is the sort of one-story, as you've seen in the renderings, kind of a large-roofed area, but that's where the entry and the commons area would be. And then the, sort of the, I don't know what would you call that? I guess it's almost like a G-shaped or C-shaped wing on the north side or the right side, sort of the center of the site. That's the residential portion, and that would be the three-story portion of the building. Yeah, so a lot of this is what I've covered in the past. We would have a covered port co-share drop-off. We would have a hundred-and-fifty-nine parking spaces, which would be enough for one space per unit plus additional thirteen spaces for visitors and employees. Our experience in similar developments is that's more than enough parking to meet the demand. We would have forty carport spaces, the required, more than the required number of handicap parking spaces. And as I mentioned, we have tried to address the previous comments we received regarding invasive species, certainly would not be on the planting list, and, you know, moving, landscaping to accommodate preservation, as much preservation of, as possible of the existing vegetation and trees. Now, tonight we are, I presented a plan development agreement to staff, I guess, geez, about three months ago or so, I think, Troy. I mean, we went over that, had some back and forth and worked with our attorneys, and I know staff reviewed it, and I think we've, we've come to an agreement that's acceptable for, for both, I guess, by staff and certainly by Pearl. But that addresses a number of things, as Troy mentioned earlier, certainly the parcels, the, it allows for the proposed senior independent living facility that we've discussed here. We've developed the site in accordance with, we will develop it with the approved site plan that we've talked about here and presented drawings upon previously, and we will be addressing the ingress egress easement with the property owner to the west. So with that, we are looking for, I guess, approval or pursuing a final plan development approval here this evening, or recommendation for approval to the full Township Board. Thank you Chairman Fox and members of the Commission, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. We do have a review letter that covers a few points that we should discuss here this evening, and that is on the letter dated July one, 2021, and I am beginning on page five, which would be packet page number forty-six. Down about halfway, Heartland Senior Plan Development Agreement Outline Draft. So we can discuss these as we come across them. The, as Troy had mentioned, we don't really have this particular group of housing in here, so it is going to be called the Senior Independent Living Facility, which is a, probably an appropriate name. Item B, you probably just need to make sure that you're comfortable with the list of permitted uses in there. I know this got tossed back and forth, as Mr. Brown had mentioned, with staff and the logic that went into those types of permitted uses that could occur at any point in time in this facility. Is everybody pretty much comfortable with those?
Yes.
Okay, and the prohibited uses, anything that's just not listed there? Troy, just want to touch on that next paragraph there. You're commenting that the staff would recommend this section be revised or potentially eliminated. That's in regards to the sign?
Yeah. So it, under site and architectural standards, there's one section stating one monument sign shall be permitted, and it outlines, it's essentially mirroring what our zoning ordinance says. Our thoughts are, it might just be better to just have it reference, the sign shall be permitted as outlined in the zoning ordinance. If there were changes where additional signage were allowed here, they would be stuck with this, it would be the PD that would limit and prevent them from doing something different as opposed to the zoning ordinance. So the thought was to not handicap them in any way.
You okay with that, Mr. Brown? Just leaving you flexibility for the future?
Yeah, that, that would be fine.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Final plan, Exhibit B. There was some minor landscape plan changes or whatever this, what, right under final plan, Exhibit B, your comment?
So this is actually, and when we were doing the preliminary review, the, the comments actually were maybe to reduce some of the amount of trees and, and change some of the locations of them. If you recall, the property immediately to the east is actually a single-family home that, that resident was there, expressed some concerns of screening. And so essentially, they have done that. They've reduced some of the trees that, and reoriented them based on those comments.
Okay.
I didn't, I, I didn't get into all that in the staff report.
Well, no, you just had it there, so I have to bring it up.
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
All righty, so, and then we got this ingress egress easement next door, and Troy, you want to explain what you're looking for on that paragraph?
You know, sometimes the best of intentions don't go the way you want, and the, the thought was to have a connection to the east. It would, in the, in my opinion, it would be beneficial to both properties to have a connection. Unfortunately, this requires and sets the applicant into negotiations with the neighbor, and you never know where those negotiations go. And so the applicant's been on what I'll call a little bit of a roller coaster ride. They came back to me and said, boy, do we have to do all this stuff? And I indicated, no, we're not sending you over there to redo their whole parking lot or, or whatever it is they're asking for. You can, you're free to, if you don't feel that it's a fair deal, you're free to walk away. What we'll do is require you to pave up or put the access portion on your property as close to that property line as you can, and then we'll have you sign off that you are in agreement to do it, and then we, as a township, one thing we can do very well is we can wait, and we'll wait for that property owner, and when they decide they have to do something, we'll have notes in the file that says now it is their turn to connect to this.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yep.
So the fire marshal's fine with that?
Yep.
With the single connection?
Yeah.
Okay, great, that was all, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this application tonight? If not, or you will find?
I'd just like to make comment that I really, really appreciate what you've done with the roof lines, the offset and reverse cables and extra cables, really make it look like a really nice building. And I like the fact that you had the single-story structure up front to kind of hide part of that three-story building behind it. Thought you guys did a really nice job on the design.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would third that, then.
All right. I thought your architects listened very well. Any other questions or comments for him here? If you are so inclined, there is a motion to recommend approval to the board can, on page one of this review letter.
Move to recommend approval of site plan application number twenty-one-dash-zero-one-one. The final plan development, site plan for Heartland Senior Living Plan Development, subject to the following conditions. One, the final plan development, site plan for Heartland Senior Living Plan Development, better known as SPPD number twenty-one-dash-zero-one-one, is subject to the approval of the Township Board. Two, final approval of the Heartland Senior Living Plan Development, or SPPD number twenty-one-dash-zero-one-one, shall require an amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the zoning map and designate the subject properties as a plan development. The subject properties which constitute the plan development project area of seventeen-point-nine-one acres in total and which are to be zoned, rezoned as PDRS follow. A tax parcel number four-seven-zero-eight-dash-two-three-dash-three-hundred-dash-zero-two-five, which is a thirteen-point-seven-one acres in size currently zoned conservative agriculture or conservation agriculture. B, tax parcel ID number forty-seven-zero-eight-dash-twenty-three-dash-three-hundred-dash-zero-two-six, which comprises two acres in size currently zoned as office services. And C, tax parcel ID number forty-seven-zero-eight-dash-two-three-dash-three-hundred-dash-zero-twenty-seven, which comprises two-point-two-two acres in size, and it is currently zoned office service. Three, the applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the Planning Department's memorandum dated July first, 2021, on the construction plan set, subject to an administrative review by the planning staff prior to the issuance of a land use permit. Four, the planning, the plan development agreement and other easements shall comply with the requirement of the Township Attorney. Five, municipal water shall be available for this development. In the event that municipal water is not available for this project, the developer shall resubmit plans to be approved by the Planning Commission and the Township Board that provide an acceptable water source. Six, the applicant shall apply for and secure all applicable approvals and permits from the Michigan Department of Transportation prior to the issuance of a land use permit for the project. And seven, applicant complies with any requirements of the Township Engineering Consultant, Department of Public Works Director, Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority, and all other government agencies as applicable.
Support.
We have a motion to recommend approval of site plan application twenty-one-dash-zero-one-one from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you for coming to Heartland.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Item eight, call to the public. We have no public this evening, so we'll move right on to item nine, Planner's Report.
I, I have nothing tonight, sorry.
All right. Item, wow. Item ten, committee reports, comments, anything from anyone? Seeing none. Item eleven, motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have a motion from Voight, second from Mitchell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Everybody have a great night. Thank you. They've been doing this for a while.
You have two minutes.
Did you come up? That's pretty good, though. Three agenda, you know?